All right, everybody. It is 6 o'clock. I'm going to hit the gavel and call this meeting to order. We start with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilmember Rocco. Please stand.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Remain standing if you would for the invocation by Malcolm McPhail of New Hope Community Church.
Thank you, and thank you, Council, for the privilege to continue to pray for you and to pray for our city as well, and all those that are here tonight especially. Quick thought: You've heard of the troubles of Job. From Job, we learn that strength grows through troubles, change develops in challenges, and wisdom matures through wounds. I hope everyone has a wonderful, happy Easter. Let us bow our heads in prayer if we can. Where may we also be those who develop through our troubles and our challenges that we face as a city? I pray for each of our council members, our mayor, our vice mayor, and those that are overseeing our city and all of its employees and all of the challenges laid before it. Give them wisdom from these challenges, that we may enjoy the fruits and the prosperity of that wisdom and that direction and the changes that take place for the better of our city and the better of our community. Be with our first responders. Bring them each home safely each and every night as they protect our city in the north, the south, the east, and the west, that you would keep your hand of protection around our community. We ask those things in your name. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. City Clerks report on posting the agenda, and we'll call.
Yes, Madam Mayor. The agenda was posted on Thursday, March 31st at 9:30 p.m. Councilmember Armendariz?
Here.
Councilmember Rocco? Councilmember Klein?
Here.
Councilmember Hilton is absent. Councilmember Marks?
Here.
Councilmember Tovar?
Here.
And Mayor Blankley?
Here. All right. That brings us to 1.6 Orders of the Day. We have none. 1.7 Employee Introductions. Police Chief Pedro Espinoza has a couple of people to introduce.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council, and members of the community. I'm happy to introduce our two new additions to the police department's family. We'll start off with Veronica Nahera Ruiz. She joins us as a police records technician in the records department. She was born and raised in Mexico City, where she was an English teacher. When she came to the U.S., she received a certificate of translating and interpretation at Evergreen Valley College. She worked at Nextdoor Solutions as domestic violence in crisis advocate, provided comprehensive services for survivors with domestic violence, and she also provided agency programs and support in community legal and medical and social services. She also worked at the Golden Gate Silicon Valley as an advocate. She has three grown sons and five grandkids. One son lives in Cancun, the other one lives in Mexico City, and the other one here joining us tonight in Gilroy. Whenever possible, she tries to spend time with her sons. She feels blessed to spend time with them all and her partner. She loves coffee, music, and dancing, which she finds relaxing and entertaining, and she believes that memories are made up of great moments that we can share with music and a good cup of coffee. Please join me in welcoming Veronica Nahera.[238.01][238.01](APPLAUSE).
Thank you. Thank you very much, everyone. I'm so honored and blessed to be part of this amazing team and to work along this amazing team and to give back to my beautiful city of Gilroy. Thank you very much for your support, especially my family, for believing in me and supporting me. Thank you.
Thank you.[262.14][262.14](APPLAUSE).
And her start date was on the 27th of March, by the way. And we also have Heidi Bates, who is our new public safety communicator in the communications center. And her start date is actually today. She has worked at county communications for the last year with the sheriff's department, and she completed call-taking, training, and has done some police dispatching. In part of that, she was a medical assistant for six years and more recently a stay-at-home mom. Heidi has her certificate for medical assistance and also some college credit. She's proud to be a Gilroy resident. She's born and raised here. She is a mom to four boys ages 2, 3, 9, and 11. She enjoys taking her kids to soccer practice and games and also enjoys going on walks, spending time with family, and visiting Bay Area beaches. Please join me in welcoming Heidi Bates.[319.52][319.52](APPLAUSE).
Good evening. I am a proud resident of Gilroy, and I am very honored to be a part of the city and especially to be a part of the new Gilroy Police Department family. So, thank you very much.
Yay. Thank you.[337.31][337.31](APPLAUSE).
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Next, we have Leann McPhillips introducing someone from Administrative Services.
Good evening, Council and community. I am happy to introduce the recent addition to our Gilroy Fleet Team, which is part of the Administrative Services Department. This is Armando Zapata. Armando started work with us on March 13th as our senior equipment mechanic. With Armando's hiring, the Fleet Division is fully staffed. Woo-hoo. As you know, over the last few years, our small fleet team had a wave of retirements, and our whole team turned over. But with Armando being added to the team, we now have a full team back in place with a great group of individuals who all have really strong fleet expertise. Armando is a seasoned mechanic with over 10 years of experience. His most recent experience was with the city of Salinas, where he worked on vehicles for police, fire, public works, and more departments too, but included a variety of heavy equipment commonly used in the public sector. He has also worked as an automotive technician for a few large car dealerships in the area. Armando possesses certifications from the National Institute for Automotive Service Excellence, and is also a graduate of Wyotech, which is a prominent automotive training program. One of the things that really impressed us about Armando when we were going through the hiring process is his continued desire to learn this trade. He is very passionate about it. He's interested in it. He wants to be an asset to his employer, and he's really self-motivated in how he goes about this. And he seeks out training and tries to learn things on his own so he can bring something back to his team every day. Armando truly enjoys the community here in Gilroy and spends a lot of time here in his off time, enjoying the parks and other activities with his son. He enjoys mountain biking, hiking, and riding his electric dirt bike, but family is the most important thing to Armando. So please join me in welcoming Armando Zapata to the city of Gilroy.[456.02][456.02](APPLAUSE).
Thank you, everyone. I'm kind of shy. I hope I don't stutter, but I'm very happy to be here for the city. I'm always here, and I plan to bring, you know, a new level of service to our Fleet Department and just help out in any way the community and any other divisions in our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for being here.[488.12][488.12](APPLAUSE). Okay. Under Item 2, Ceremonial Items, we have none. Item 3 is Presentations to the Council, and we will start with our annual presentation from Visit Gilroy California Welcome Center by Frank Johnson.
Mayor, council members, and citizens of Gilroy, thank you so much for allowing me to give this presentation for 2022. I moved to Gilroy in November, and it's not hyperbole or just self-serving, but I just really enjoy the community every week that I'm here more. And you'll see my appreciation for the community come through and the work. So first, I'll talk a little bit about Visit Gilroy, what it is. I think some people are kind of confused between the Welcome Center and Visit Gilroy. Also, I have a lot of charts and data we can go through that will just kind of paint a picture of Visit Gilroy and talk about some of the initiatives that we have planned. Now, you'll see our mission statement there in the left column. We had a strategic planning meeting just this last Thursday, where I'm really happy to say we have like 17 board members, and 15 of them could make it. So that's, any of you who are on boards know that how important it is to have a strong board that shows up for a six-hour strategic planning meeting. But one of the things we're going to do is just readdress that mission statement to make sure it's still relevant. Also, you have our Board of Directors there. You'll recognize a lot of names that are community leaders. But I really enjoy the breadth of organizations and businesses that are represented, from wineries to golf courses to hotels, restaurants, and it's just a wonderful mix of California or Gilroy culture. And we got the staff. Now, in the premium outlets, we have the California Welcome Center, which is an office front that has basically a gift shop that has a lot of offerings for people that want to buy Gilroy-themed gifts, but it also has just a huge amount of information for people traveling through Gilroy. Just today, I saw someone in there packing a bag full of information for Catalina and all the way up to Sacramento. But it also has a lot of local gifts in there that locals can buy, garlic-themed Gilroy-related items. And there's about 20 California Welcome Centers in California. The manager of our Welcome Center is Susan Childers, who's to my right in that photo, and she's doing a wonderful job. She was just hired right before I was, and we're very lucky to have her. Madeline Martin, who is our Tourism and Community Engagement Coordinator, writes our blog. She's a very good writer and does a lot with social media and event planning. Now, I feel like I should, I could take this chart and put it on a T-shirt because just about everything related to the pandemic is reflected into this chart across many different sectors of society. California was in, California is the number-one tourism destination in the United States, and it was on a nice growth path, a growth path until a couple of years ago. We all know what happened. And the good news is California as a whole is recovering nicely. We're still not up to pre-pandemic levels, but it's certainly trending in the right direction. And, but we have to pay attention to some of the things that's changed. Business travel isn't what it used to be. Families are traveling together more often, and the older Americans seem to have proportionally more money, more disposable income to spend. So that all is reflected in our advertising and outreach. Now, these are some of the efforts we had last year. CCTC stands for the Central California Tourism Committee, and it's a co-op of other tourism destination management organizations from Ventura all the way up to Morgan Hill. And without the cooperation with those organizations, we could not afford to get into some pricey magazines like you see up there. So we form relationships with other tourism organizations throughout California in order to highlight Gilroy and to get the most for our money. You'll see a number of other publications up there that we've had a presence in. I think one that I really like and is worth pointing out is the Targeted Expedia Digital Campaign. That's a really innovative digital campaign where somebody goes to Expedia, you know, Expedia's like Travelocity or those different travel apps. You plan a trip, and you type in Gilroy, or you type in San Jose, and then an ad comes up for Gilroy, and then it directs you to a hotel. Last year, we had a two-for-one, our investment for the amount of money we put in, we had twice that amount in hotel bookings. So we always want to continue and look for those type of digital opportunities. This is a video show, actually. I just posted this today, and at first, you may see, oh, that's a cute little video, but reels are really the way to go in the future. Everybody knows about TikTok and Facebook reels and Instagram. This is a 45-second reel. I've started, I've done two so far that relate to travel destinations close to Gilroy. I think that's a huge strength of Gilroy, is how close we are to so many beautiful places. But as you're watching this, think about the opportunity. We could do one for the arts. We can do one for downtown, the restaurants, golfing. And I want to have a library of 30 of these or so, you know, in the next year if we can. That's probably too optimistic, maybe 20. But the fun part about this is Google owns YouTube. YouTube, this is a YouTube short. YouTube is really pushing this. Google is pushing this. So when people type in a search phrase into a search engine, more and more, we're going to see small videos like this. So it's just a fun video that just has so many applications, and it's, I anticipate big things out of this format, so that's fun. Thank you. Advertising and marketing results, that kind of speak for itself. I don't want to put anyone to sleep. One thing I'll mention there that I had asked questions about is, you see, in 2021 is a little higher than 2022, visits to our website. That's because Visit Gilroy, the previous executive director made a great decision in that there, a lot of people weren't traveling, so it doesn't make any sense just to pour money into ways to get people to visit California. She put the money into promoting local California, local Gilroy businesses. So a lot of those, that number, we always got to be careful when we look at numbers, what does it reflect? It's mostly locals going to our website responding to the campaign they ran. So that's why it's a little inflated. They're really good numbers. They don't necessarily, it doesn't reflect that we have less this year is bad, and it doesn't necessarily reflect that all those people are good. It just shows that we were supporting the community. Walk-in traffic at the Welcome Center, these include numbers from, we have a Welcome Center at Gilroy Gardens and at the outlets, the premium, Gilroy Premium Outlets. So you can see the numbers there. Again, I don't necessarily want to put you to sleep, but you just show that everything is moving in the right direction. The local hotels, if occupancy is down, the revenue tends to stay stable or go up a little bit because they adjust the rates based on what the market will bear and what, in order for them to meet targets, which result in, even though if the attendance does go, occupancy does go down a little bit, the tax tends to go up or at least stay in within acceptable parameters. 2022 Highlights, well, I guess you're stuck with me for a little while here, hopefully, but, you know, I'm happy to have this position. We have, previously, we started an influencer campaign that has resulted in a lot of eyeballs on Gilroy, which I'm very happy, and I want to continue that. And just a quick work on blogs. People see blog, and they don't, they think it's just an article written that's here today, and people click off it, and it's gone. The blogs are there forever, and they contain a lot of search engine terms that help with SEO. So when people are planning on traveling, they type in certain search terms that relates to the blog, and it all helps our SEO on our website. And so blogs are an important part of our industry. I'll go over some more highlights in another slide, but a lot of good things are coming. Challenges and Opportunities, well, I mean, what can really be said that you don't already know? I do plan on starting a series of, a limited series of podcasts, which will help more digital advertising opportunities, like you saw, more cultural opportunities. We're following, but we're keeping a sharp eye on social media trends. I love that the Gilroy City Council has adopted outdoor recreation as a priority. I think that'll help draw people to the area, along with the wineries, Gilroy Gardens, and the premium outlets. And one thing I'll mention is, I'm asked all the time, who do we see as our primary competition? Honestly, I don't think we really have many. Santa Cruz is not a competition. If you want to go to Santa Cruz, you're going to go to Santa Cruz. You can say the same about Monterey or other areas. Gilroy is truly unique and distinctive, and part of the things I want to work toward is really celebrating and differentiating us from the other communities, because we have enough wonderful things here that will make us a destination that it'll make us unique. We are unique. We need to highlight that. Gilroy has a, Visit Gilroy has a strong collective of partners. Just, I'm on a few of those boards. I sit on many boards and committees and meetings, so I'm happy to be a part of the community. And a bright future. Sharks hockey, I mean, that'd be a game changer. I did some just, I think my, if my research is correct, there's over 2,000 high school hockey clubs in California. Don't quote me on that. That's the website I went to. But just think what that can do. All the different tournaments and clinics, it could be huge for the area. Gourmet Alley, just very excited. All those things on there are wonderful. Very excited about the downtown. I say Future Garlic Festival. I probably should have phrased that differently. It's mostly the future of the garlic festival. I recently went to a Visit California conference. I must have shook hands with 150 people. I don't think one of them didn't ask, when's the garlic, when's the next garlic festival? How's it going? So garlic is a part of our DNA. I mean, the, yes, the unspeakably tragic past, but it's a part of our identity. Our brand is still strong. While there's challenges, our brand is still strong with garlic, and there's a lot of room to grow. Just in closing, I would say that for any of you who really want to know what Visit California is about, look at our responses on social media. There are so many comments made by Gilroy citizens. One of the most recent ones that I saw from the video I did on the way to Mount Madonna was, Gilroy's so beautiful. I'm so glad I moved back. And there's all kinds of comments like that. We recently did the wedding show. Madeline put it together, did a fantastic job. The big takeaway for me was seeing how the, you think ostensibly it's about brides meeting vendors. I had more fun looking at the vendors, meeting other vendors. You know, you had the photographer talking to the balloon person, talking to the caterer. And once we engage all those businesses, they too celebrate Visit Gilroy. Thank you for having this event. So we're very deeply ingrained in the community, a very important part of the community, and just enjoy getting a platform to celebrate. I think Visit Gilroy is like a mirror that shows the best of Gilroy. Our job is to fill hotel rooms to get people to visit, but I see a lot of Gilroy residents seeing the best of Gilroy and what we promote, and it gives them a reason to celebrate and to champion Gilroy as a whole. So, thank you.
Yay. Thank you, Frank. Yay. Thank you. All right. Any questions, yes, questions of council? Hang on. Frank's got a question?
Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Tovar, yes.
Frank, thank you so much, and I appreciate the conversations you and I've had over the course of time since you've been here and sort of just listening to your vision and sort of your plans. We're talking about sort of two things. Looking at the website, which is great, I mean, it's very appealing, but knowing the large percentage of Spanish-speaking individuals that come to visit Gilroy and even the Asian population, has there been discussions or talks, and I, because I don't see it on here, maybe I missed it, of translating the website into different languages, because I think that would be important?
Well, two things, and I may digress a little bit there just because you talked about the Spanish-speaking people. One of the first things I did is I made an effort to reach out, to have blog posts that appealed more to the Hispanic, Spanish-speaking community, and it was tough. There's a lot of, the trust hasn't been built.
Right.
I had a Spanish-speaking person approach him on our behalf. So, and we're having some difficulty building those bridges with the Spanish-speaking community, understandably, but I'm sensitive to it, and I want to make it better. Victoria introduced me to the Latino Family Fund, Jackie at the Latino Family Fund, and they offered to help in the future to reach out to any Spanish-speaking people. So that's something we're working on. As far as the website goes, we do have, you'll see in the consent calendar, we have a carryover of about 70,000 or so. That's going to go away really quick. Because we need a website, a newer, up-to-date website, which will probably be at least 40, 40 or 50. And we'll address that at this time. My personal feeling is, you can go to Google, and you can translate into Spanish. So right now, I'm, for right now, the need is covered through the actual browsers. As far as actually translating into different languages, I think the browsers do a good job, and I think most Spanish-speaking people or non-English speakers know how to get around that. But, you know, we'd like to hear more comments, if there's any way we should address it better. You know, if I need to spend $40,000, $50,000 on a website, we're just going to get less if we have to translate it out of that website, if we're translating it to every language for something that a browser does already anyway.
Right. Okay. Well, yeah, and the reason why I ask it, because recently it was said at a council meeting that the Hispanic businesses have been unintentionally ignored, which I had a hard time with that. But I just think that we have an opportunity to capture, obviously, this website and sort of capture those businesses. So just something to think about. Part two, and again, I know, and I know all of us here promote all the different, you know, wineries and shops and everything that we have here, and I know over the years it's been difficult to, just people say, where can I go to find local wineries, if not to the actual wineries themselves? And I remember I visited Lodi, I think it was their Chamber of Commerce office, and they showcased every winery they had there, which was amazing. You walk in there, you see everything. I'm not sure if through the, through your center, if you're able to do that, where, again, you're promoting our local wineries, maybe selling, I don't know if that's a possibility, but I think that might be something.
Yeah. No, that's great. And it's funny, if I were to mention like the four Visit Centers that I'm trying to emulate, Visit Lodi is one of them.
Right.
They've done a great job, along with Temecula and Modesto and a couple of other ones. So, yeah, there's something there. I'm working with the Fresno, the Gilroy Historical Society to hang some historical photos in there. I think we just don't have much wall space. But I'd love to have a little car and a QR code for every winery. I don't know quite how to do that with the space we have. Maybe we have to have some sort of, but I agree with you. Maybe we need some sort of digital solution to do that. I don't know. But we could be doing a better job of that.
No, no, thank you. And then one last question. Sorry, sorry, because I think it's important, and again, you addressed it a little bit. And I don't know, looking in the presentation, if you've captured the data, the number of folks that actually walked into the center, those that are English, Spanish, Vietnamese-speaking were, do you, how, do you have staff on board that's able to speak these different languages?
We have, we keep track of where they're coming from by country.
Okay.
And we, it hasn't been an issue for non-English-speaking people so far, but we do keep track of where they come from by country.
Okay. Thank you. That's it. Thanks.
Oh. Councilmember Armendariz, you have a question?
Yeah. Thank you for the presentation. Those numbers look really great, really promising. So, a couple things. We'll need to add the Tamal Festival to that list of events coming up. It's September 30th in downtown.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
The Tamal Festival?
Okay.
Yeah. It'll be the 7th annual, and it draws a good-sized crowd, about 20,000 people at last count. And then along the lines also of what Councilmember Tovar was saying, when I worked at the outlets as a young person, I had a commission-based job. And because I spoke Spanish, I was able to make a good amount of commission off the amount of tourists that came in by the busload, and sometimes they were Brazilian, and so I could get away with selling to them in Spanish, even though they spoke Portuguese. And so I see what Fred is saying in terms of the amount of international visitors we get to the outlets and other parts of our community. I think it would, it'd be worth the investment to invest in, you know, some culturally appropriate language on the website. And then, if you dig a little bit deeper and look at the list of your board members, I think if your board was more diverse and included different, you know, folks of different backgrounds and also of different industries, more diverse industries from our community, I think that would help connect you more to those communities that we're lacking in. And thank you. Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Frank.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Great report. All right. Item 3.2. Public, this is the time on the agenda for members of the public to comment on things not on the agenda. I know I should be able to see how many you have, but I don't.
Yes, Madam Mayor, we have one speaker card.
Okay.
And it's Jeff Borth.
Since there's one speaker, I could take all the time I wanted.
You got three minutes. It's already started.
Probably not. Okay. Well, you know when you're getting, you're going to have companies that come to your house. Well, we've got a lot of company that's going to be coming to Gilroy, and so we're getting ready for company. We've got a lot of events planned for this summer, starting with April 12th, we've got the Poppy Jasper Film Festival. On May 20th, we have the Wine and Art Walk. June 15th, we start the eight series of the Music Summer Series, which is very, very popular. We've got the ever-popular Wine and Art Walk, which I mentioned. We've got the Halloween Beer Crawl in October. We also got Dia de los Muertos event that takes place on October 29th. And the planning is already begun for the Holiday Parade. It should be the nicest we've ever had. Now, what I think was really good is that the city led the way with helping to clean up the downtown. Bryce did a masterful job of, on the 20, was it, the 25th, of putting together, cleaning up the day, and we cleaned up a lot of trash. Well, we followed up with 2.0 this last Saturday and picked up another, we filled, overfilled a trash bin with additional trash. That's how much trash built up in one week. And we filled seven of those agricultural barrels, because we were pulling weeds, raking leaves, pulling out branches, that sort of thing. And we also varnished 18 half-barrels that had been painted by local artists. So now the really fun part's going to come, and on Cleanup 3.0, this next Saturday, the 8th, and you're all invited to come down, we're going to be replacing some of those old planters that are kind of worn and worn out, not looking quite so good. We're going to be placing some new barrels in there as well. We're coming in with planting material, and we're also going to have chips where we're going to go and recharge the chips around the planted plants that are in the downtown right now. And then, with any luck, before the first event, we're going to have, we'll be power washing the sidewalks. And that hasn't been done in over two years. And so I'm really grateful. I'm very grateful to Jimmy Forbes. He's, we've been working together on helping to get the downtown lit up, and I really appreciate that, Jimmy. And then we're also having discussions about how we can get those, like those sidewalks, done. So I just think it's really good, and I'm not sure where I'm at on time, because I can't see the timer from here. But I do want to tell you, there's a lot of positive things going on in the downtown, thank you, right now, in terms of buildings. You'll see a lot, you see a lot of things happening with glass, glazers coming in, tile work being done, concrete, you're going to see some of these plywood walls coming down. Even Aldo over at his Italian restaurant would seem to be dragging his feet a bit. We're seeing very positives going on there as well. And lastly, the old music store, looks like we have some possible tenants, really good tenants for that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have another speaker?
Yes.
Yes, Madam Mayor, we have Gregory Philios.
Great.
Thank you very much. I was here on Saturday when Mayor Blankley gave the State of the City address. And it's good to hear all the positives that are going on. I'd like to see the City Council, again, focus and advertise this. And I called Mayor Blankley our head cheerleader. I want you guys to all be cheerleaders for the city. Getting the people in the city involved should be a priority. And listening to what is going on, we've got all kinds of things going on. Mayor Blankley, raise those things that are going on. I'd like to see that. I'd like to see people getting involved. And I'd like to see, I'd like to see all of you out there in the communities going to these kinds of things. We got the summer coming up. We got, getting the kids involved, that'd be great. Talking to Chief Espinoza, we've got a, this fall, we've got a fantastic Citizens Police Academy coming up, and having people in the community learn about what's going on in the police department. That, that kind of thing, getting people involved, getting out there, letting people know that who you are. And I thank you for that. And I'm semi-retired. I work at Gilroy Gardens in the Foods Warehouse, and Gilroy Gardens is quite a draw. Same thing with the wineries. The wineries are a big draw. Again, you get, get those people involved. I, also, just for a moment, I talked to leading superintendent of Gilroy Unified School District, Superintendent Flores. And when the new superintendent comes in, please reach out to the new superintendent. Again, that, the Gilroy Unified School District is the biggest employer here in Gilroy. And get that superintendent on your side. Work with that superintendent. Let's get, get involved with the schools. Let people know that you're, you know, that you're behind whatever the schools are doing. Any questions?
Nope. Thank you. All right. Any other speakers?
No other speakers, Madam Mayor.
All right. That brings us to reports of council members. Councilmember Barco.
That's a report.
Councilmember Arminderis.
Yes, really briefly, Mayor. I had no meetings, but there was a huge and successful community celebration in honor of Cesar Chavez on Saturday downtown. It was attended by over 200 people. And folks from our community received awards honoring their work that continued his legacy. And then April 22nd, in our civic patio area here, there will, I don't know what the name, what we call it officially, but there will be a fair to provide resources to families of children with autism. April 22nd. Thank you. That's it.
Okay. Councilmember Marks?
Yes. Gilroy Gardens had their board meeting, their board retreat, I should say, just a week ago, so I have a lot of good news to share. Gilroy Gardens has been in operation for over 20 years. From 2002 to 2013, $750,000 was invested in the parks. From 2014 to the present, $11,950,000 has been invested in new attractions and events, which continues to make Gilroy Gardens a desirable, family-friendly destination. With an aging park, equipment needs to be replaced to keep it functional. Gilroy Gardens has set aside $1.9 million for deferred maintenance, which demonstrates this company is taking care of the city of Gilroy's asset. When comparing Gilroy Gardens' profits with other entertainment sites in the area, with fewer operating days, Gilroy Gardens beats out the Tech Museum in San Jose, which operates year-round. That's quite amazing. If a park wants to maintain its sustainability, it must continue to change while still keeping what makes the garden special. This park was designed for children under 10 years of age. Now, new concepts are being developed to attract children between 11 and 14 years of age. Not only will the park continue with its theme park persona, but will expand on the educational piece. Gilroy Gardens is accessible for all children. To earn a free admission ticket to the gardens, all a child needs to do is check out and read five books from the Gilroy Public Library. Natural Science Days will be held this May. These educational days will be held on May 12th, 19th, and 26th, and will reach up to 10,000 students. In 2024, this program will be expanded to nine days. Silicon Valley Clean Energy recently donated $10,000 towards Gilroy Gardens' new education and learning initiative. A nature exchange at the Green Barn reaches out to K-12 students. Younger students explore nature while high school students earn service hours for the time spent working with younger students in this program. With this curriculum, an opportunity opens up for grant funding. Eco-tourism was discussed for the lower hill sites. Nature trail walks and zip lines are proposed, educating people on a microecosystem while having fun. In the theme park industry, parks need to reinvest in new attractions and events every two years to maintain their attendance with the intention of always growing it. Gilroy Gardens has many new ideas that you will see in the next couple of years. Opening this summer, Mac and Cheese Bar with all the trimmings. Uncle John's Restaurant is returning to a smokehouse featuring ribs and brisket. Floral drinks are going to be on sale to accentuate fantastical flowers. And a brand-new Lakeside Splash is opening in early June. Coming in 2024, interactive rides for all ages to enjoy. May Gilroy Gardens continue to grow and prosper. I would also like to thank everyone in Gilroy who came out to help clean up on March 25th. It was a great activity. It took about an hour to clean up both alleyways, and they looked really nice when finished. So thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Hilton is absent. Councilmember Klein?
Yeah. I'd just like to say, I did attend both Visit Gilroy and the Chambers Retreats. And I, we've undergone some new changes, new leadership, and I just want to commend both of our new leaders, Frank and Victoria, for taking the helm. And I know good things are ahead, and I'm excited about that. So, no other reports.
Thank you. Councilmember Tovar?
Thank you, Mayor. And just to recap something that the mayor shared on Saturday during her speech in regards to the school district and Dr. Flores, who's retiring. I was honored to be part of a committee that voted unanimously that we are going to name the Gilroy Student Center after Dr. Flores, given that she's been here for so many years. It's an honor to have her name up there and for all the work that she's done. I was lucky enough to serve eight years on the school board and saw firsthand the work that she does for her kids. So we're glad that we're going to name a building after her.
All right. Thank you. Yes, and same for me. Didn't have any of the official meetings since our last council meeting, but we did have the State of the City address on Saturday. And I'm very proud to say that this room was packed. It was standing room only. There were a couple of seats in between, but I don't think people wanted to walk their way in. So it was very nice to see such a, such a large showing of support all across. On March 23rd, I attended the sneak peek of the hopefully soon-to-be Gilroy Youth Impact Center. And that was a nice event that was held by Digital Nest, Youth Alliance, and Latino Family Fund. So just continuing to watch that progress. And lastly, on March 22nd, I attended a meeting together with Jimmy with Dignity Moves, which is a company where we're continuing to explore options. We'll hear more about that later on in our agenda, as the things that, things to consider when it comes to temporary housing. Okay. With that, I'll move on to council correspondence. And you all saw in the packets a letter of support that's being requested of us by California High Speed Rail Authority to support a federal grant, federal state partnership grant application for intercity passenger rail program grant. So I just need to know whether I have council support to support that on behalf of the city, or if I'm just going to be myself. Okay. Caroline?
Yeah.
Okay, so one, two, three. Okay, so I see four, so that's the minimum that I need. I see, yeah, two are down, four are up. So, okay. It's good to laugh. Okay. Future council-initiated items? Are there any? Okay, good. So we move to the consent calendar, and I'll start by asking if there's any council member who wishes to pull an item from consent.
There is.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd like to pull 7.3.
All right.
On wage theft.
Uh huh. Okay, so 7.3 is pulled. So do I have, wait, let me open public comment now first. Do we have anybody who wants to speak on any item on consent?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay, so closing public comment. And do I have a motion for 7.1, 7.2, and 7.4?
I'll move.
Okay, I'll second.
Okay, so moved by Councilmember Barco and seconded by Councilmember Marks. And do you need to do a roll call on that?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Let me just get this ready.
Sure.
Councilmember Arminderis?
Yes.
Councilmember Barco?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar?
Yes.
And Mayor Blankley?
Yes. Okay, so that brings us then to 7.3. Is there a staff report then that we do for this, or?
Yeah, I just wanted to pull it and ask if we could delay it till our next council meeting, or a future council meeting, just because I was reached out to by a number of impacted individuals and community groups who'd like, who have some concerns about it and some questions. And so I think if there's no urgency behind passing this tonight, if we could get just some additional time for community engagement.
Why aren't they here tonight?
Because it was shared with them over the weekend. So.
Okay, so looking to the rest of the council, I don't believe we, I personally do not wish to move something for that reason. We'd be moving all kinds of things for that reason. So, all right, so it's a majority of council who supports moving this. That's a no, that's a no, no. So that's three to three to move it? Is that what that is?
I just, I think it marks the time.
The tie fails.
Oh, tie fails. Oh, I thought tie. Okay, so it's not moved. Okay, so then, is there a motion?
I make the motion to approve item 7.3.
Okay, I'll second it. Is this a roll call vote?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Give me one second here.
Oh, do I need to do public comment, though?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Okay, public comment.
No speaker cards on this, Madam Mayor.
Closing public comment.
So the motion was by Councilmember Barco and seconded by?
Councilmember Blankley. Councilmember, Mayor Blankley?
Mayor Blankley. Thank you. Councilmember Arminderis?
No.
Councilmember Barco?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton is absent. Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar?
No.
And Mayor Blankley?
Yes. Okay, so that passes. All right. Item eight, bids and proposals. None. Item nine, public hearings. Adopt the 2022 Sewer System Master Plan. Darrell Jordan giving us this report.
Just one moment, I need to pull up the presentation. Good evening, Madam Mayor, council persons. Tonight, we have three master plans to bring to you for a review. Our water master plan, sewer master plan, and storm drainage master plan. We brought our consultant, Tony, coming up here tonight to present to you. He's been doing the work for the city of Gilroy for the last 20 years. He's been in the business for over 40 years. And I will hand it over to Tony and have him take it away.
Thanks, Darrell. Madam Mayor, council members, it's great to be here to report on this, these very important projects, water, sewer, and storm drainage master plans. Agenda for today is to give you an idea of what these master plans are about, why do we do them, why do we work on them, the process that we go through. It's a very long process. At the end, it's a big document, but we go through a process. The important thing about these is they have to be defensible, because we use them for, you know, financials as well. And then I'll talk a little bit briefly about the water master plan, sewer master plan, and the storm master plan. So first, why, the objectives. So, the master plans look at the capacity of the water, the sewer, and the storm conveyance facilities. Are they good enough to serve our existing customers? What do we need to serve future growth? So that's what the master plan look into. We use computer tools that are very defensible to make sure we evaluate the capacity adequacy of the existing system and plan for the future. And so they become essentially a very defensible, they become defensible documents that will be used for many years. And they, they have to meet the level of service for existing users and for, for future developments. So they answer the questions, what infrastructure needs to be constructed? When? When do we need it? Today, or in the future, for existing use, or for future development use? How much will it cost? And I think we lost the PowerPoint?
Yeah.
The minute, the minute I mentioned cost, that disappeared. And then who pays for it? That's as important. We have to make sure we have a nexus between the cost and who is going to pay for that. So the process, this is a very long process. It takes years. But essentially, at the beginning, we review existing conditions. Where do we stand? What kind of land use do we have? It has to be consistent with the general plan. And this has been a very long story. This, these master plans started a while back, and they were placed on hold for a little bit because the general plan was in a state of update. And we had to wait for the general plan's preferred alternatives was selected, and then we restarted the project. And then the pandemic came back in the way, and so we, we had to go through that schedule. Then, as I mentioned, we use computer applications. We use technology to make sure the system, the entire system, water, sewer, storm, they're on the computers. And we have computer programs that evaluate the capacity adequacy. We're behind the, it's like Microsoft Excel. And so we use those effectively to evaluate. Okay, I have to move the mouse again. And then we recommend improvements. What improvements? What projects do we need to fix the existing system? Where? And what projects do we need to service the growth? And at the end of the day, we come up with a list of projects, from where to where, and how long is that pipeline is going to be, and how much does it cost? and how long is that pipeline is going to be, and how much does it cost? So that's, in a nutshell, a project, uh, the, the master plan process. Next, I will talk a little bit about the water system master plan, and again, the land use and the general plan is important, we look at the existing land use, how existing customers are using the water system, the sewer system, we characterize them, we characterize their behavior, um, and we also look at the future general plan, the 2040 general plan. In this case, water system, just characterizing it, 200 miles of pipelines is what we have here, four pressure zones, you see on the color coding, the blue lines is one pressure zone, and the purple is, you know, the elevated pressure zones, and the water system, you have to push the water up, up the hill to make sure that you maintain adequate pressures, so that's what we look for. Do we have adequate pressure, adequate pressures? Can we fight fires in the, in the right places? If not, what do we need? What pipelines do we need to make sure we do? Groundwater supply wells, do we have enough supplies? Do we have enough wells? Do we need to build more wells? When do we need to build them? Do we have enough storage? Storage serves many purposes. It serves how the system maintains system operation, how it operates, day, day in, day out. It also stores the fire, if there's a fire, where does the water come from? From storage. And, um, and then emergency. In the city of Gilroy, storage was adequate, this is unique. Typically, we find, you know, most municipalities have not invested as much in storage, in the city of Gilroy, you have invested in storage, you have a good amount of storage here, just the right amount, not, not too much, not too little, it's the amount that you, that is needed. Um, okay, next. And then at the end of the day, you see a, a, a map that's on the left that shows red lines, the blue lines are the existing pipelines, the red lines are the proposed pipelines to service, some of them are needed for existing users, some of them are needed to service growth. You can see in the industrial area to southeast, those are the larger pipelines to serve industrial use, you need bigger pipelines for industrial areas to fight larger fires, and also on the north, northeast. Now, the rest of the system, not much, not many improvements, and it shows the total amounts that's needed, some of it is paid by existing users, and some is, some of it is attributed to future developers. So the existing, the nexus is associated with the rates, so when you're updating your rate studies, that's the number that the consultant will look for, and if you're updating the capacity fees, uh, then the second column is the one that they will look for, just to make sure that we are not undercollecting from existing users, we're not undercollecting from developers. That's important, that's one of the biggest values, this master plan, and the master plan tells, it gives you a guideline, um, and, and, and a, um, roadmap for how the system will orderly grow, but it's very important to make sure that we don't, we don't undercollect. This is a business, we're running an enterprise here.
Shake the mouse.
So in, in, in summary, the capacity of the water system pipelines are generally good, um, some improvements are needed, capacity of groundwater supply and storage facilities is also very good, extending service to future growth, so we look at these two, two things, existing, future growth, future capacity and, and of pipelines project, groundwater supply wells are developer-driven. When they, when they knock on the door and they want to develop, you know, city staff will take a look, based on the master plan, this is the roadmap, this is how much, this is the, the pipelines we need for you to be able to build here. And that's the water master plan, this sets the guidelines, I will go a little bit quicker on the wastewater and the storm water. I didn't show the land use in this case, but this is also consistent with the land use. This is just showing how the sewer system is collected from the homes and makes it all the way to the street, and then continues in the pipeline all the way to the treatment plant, just how the system is collected and conveyed, and the color-coded lines are the major pipelines here on the graphic, are the major lines that is taking the wastewater all the way to the, uh, Gilroy wastewater treatment band in the southeast part of the city. Uh, smaller lines are shown in, in brown, uh, there are 167 miles of pipelines, the sizes of the pipelines are about up to 60 inches in diameter, uh, one wastewater treatment plant, and then we evaluated the system, and the pipelines that you see in blue are again the existing system here, the red pipelines are the one we are recommending be upsized to resolve bottlenecks, some of them are bottlenecks attributed to existing users, but there's also the joint trunk that was evaluated as a separate analysis, and we integrated that in this study. So the first two numbers, the 7.8, uh, attributed to existing users, and the 4.9 attributed to future users, those are the capacity fees from this analysis here. The second group of costs, we extracted those from a separate study done jointly by the city of Morgan Hill and Gilroy, that looked at not capacity, took at the condition, pipelines age over the years, and they need to be taken care of, and the joint trunk is old, and that firm has identified some segments that need to be replaced, some of that cost is attributed to Gilroy, some of that cost is attributed to the city of Morgan Hill, and those are the two numbers at the bottom that are shown, and the 9.7 is the amount attributed to the city of Gilroy. That's on the wastewater, the last report is on the storm water, uh, master plan, I'm sorry, this is the sewer, um, recommendation, recommendation for the existing system, capacity of sewer pipeline is also good, uh, future growth, future growth will, will be attributed to the future developers, and the deliverable is the master plan document, storm drain system master plan. This is a map that shows how the drainage, how, when, when, when you get water on, when it, when it drains, where does the water go? The water goes, based on this color coding, the, the blue area is called the Yagas Creek Watershed, so it drains into a series of creeks and canals and, and continues south. On the west side, you have Uves Creek Watershed, so that's how it drains in general, uh, and there are pipelines up to 84 inches in diameter, if we break those further to see how it drains, this provides with a finer drainage areas, I'm not going to go into details, just a pretty map, uh, but this is, was all in, in the computers, and that's how we analyze the system and its adequacy. And again, like the water, like the wastewater, this shows where the improvements are needed, what pipelines are needed. So all those pipelines, uh, are needed on the storm, in general, not just Gilroy, in general, on the storm, most municipalities have not planned for, you know, making sure not, no flooding is, is, is there. On the storm, you, it's a catch-up, the, the, the capital costs are usually larger on the storm, and that's not just Gilroy, it's because on storm you're buying insurance, how much you want to make sure nothing floods? Well, floods is going to happen, but we want to make sure we have, we have the, we have defensible documents that are based on generally acceptable design, uh, and so that's what we did here. I want to also point out that your master plans, water, sewer, and storm are not new. You have master plan in place, you have master plan, your city staff have been using, these are updates, and you update the master plan usually 10 ye- every 10 years, if there's no growth, if there's growth, you update them every five years, just to make sure that you've identified, your, your, general plan changes, uh, the laws, the state laws change, uh, so there's a lot of reasons why you would want to update them, in this case, now you're set for at least a good five years. In summary, for the, so the, the costs in this case are about 27 millions for existing users, and you don't have to build them overnight, you just have to find the priorities, there are priorities in there, and so you, as, as you can, you can, can, can begin to reinforce the storm system to handle floods. Uh, and finally, again, existing system is, I wouldn't say good here, I think I would say it's fair, we have some catch-up to do on the storm, uh, improvements are needed on the exist, on the future, you know, as developers knock on doors, we will finance that. And that concludes the presentation for, as brief as I could, I'd like to talk for the next two hours, but I think we have other, other things you want to talk about.
Thank you, though, okay, council members.
At this time, I think.
Oh.
Uh, there's a continuation.
Oh, sorry.
Right, on the financials, and I'll be here for questions.
Okay.
Thank you, Tony. Joe Song of the Fund Instructed with, um, the city of Gilroy, and I, I'll just end quickly, you know, it's, it's nice to do the master plans, but obviously, um, you know, the question comes down to how do you fund these things, so I want to spend just a quick, uh, few minutes talking about, you know, our existing, uh, environment. So, you know, funding a master plan, as Tony mentioned, you know, the costs are allocated within either your existing system users or your future, um, capacity users, so, um, how do you do that? For the existing system, you know, you usually have a utility user fee, which for the city of Gilroy, we have a water and a wastewater utility, uh, which are rate pair funded. For the future systems, um, these are funded by a mechanism called development impact fees, which are, uh, assessed to, uh, and paid by the developers as, uh, future developments occur in the city, and those dollars in turn are collected and spent on expansion projects. Um, so from a utility perspective, we have a water, wastewater, uh, utility which are rate pair funded, we have those mechanisms in, in place for water and wastewater for the development impact, which is the future system, we have a impact fee for water, wastewater, as well as storm drain. The one area we, we do need to do some work on is, as Tony highlighted, there's, uh, existing, um, improvements that are needed in the storm drain, so this is something that, uh, we don't have an existing revenue source for, uh, by default, if there are any improvements that we would need to do, we would have to look at the general fund. Um, so this is an area that, you know, staff will be looking at, um, as part of the upcoming, uh, two-year budget process, you know, to see how, what other cities are doing, um, to fund some of these existing deficiencies in the storm drain areas. And, uh, as Tony mentioned, the typical next step, um, you know, after these plans are updated, we, we go back to the drawing board and we, you know, look at the existing user fees, we look at the existing development impact fees, and we also take a look at, you know, how much fund balances we have, and we do the calculations to ensure, how much do we need to collect in order to build out these projects over the next given period of time? So for Gilroy, both of our utilities do have some fund balances, so we'll be looking at those, both of the utilities are currently undergoing a user rate study, so these master plans will feed right into, into that, um, analysis, and, uh, all three of the impact fees are planned to be updated, uh, as part of the upcoming, uh, work plan, and as I indicated earlier, the funding option for existing storm drain improvements will be explored, so that's in the context of our city, um, I wanted to make sure you have an opportunity to hear that. Happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, Harsho. Okay, council members, before I open the, uh, public comment, does anyone from the council wish to ask a question? I have just one, it's an obvious one, I think, but when we say the need, refer to the upsizing of pipes, that means the whole digging up of a street and having to replace the pipe like happened on First Street when that was being redone, right?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I didn't get that. When we upsize pipes?
When, when you need to upsize a pipe, in an, so an existing pipe, it's already in the ground, and the street's already paved over, that means digging up the street, getting down and replacing the pipe, correct?
Correct, that's correct.
Yeah, that's what it means, right, so most of us have experienced that with First Street before that got repaved with upsizing water lines, I don't know that we upsized sewer as well, but we certainly did water, okay, that's just, that's all I wanted to know.
So from a scheduling perspective, it is always a good idea to coordinate this with what's planned for resurfacing or for some work.
Let's hope that coordinates.
But again, this is a plan for the next 20 years.
Right.
25 years, so you look at the next five years, what project do we need, and then synchronize those with traffic.
Yes, thank you. Okay, so going to, going to public comment, or public hearing, this is a public hearing.
Yeah, I think, for clarification, although Mr. Akal gave, uh, his staff, his report for all three plans, we should open the public hearing right of 9.1 first, which is the, the sewer master plan, and then vote on that, vote on adopting that, that plan, and then go to 9.2 and 9.3.
Okay, we can do it that way. All right, so do you have any public speakers for 9.1?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right, then we'll close the public hearing on 9.1, and would anyone like to make a motion to approve a resolution to adopt the 2022 sewer system master plan?
Mayor, before we do that, I have one question.
Sorry, okay.
Can we have a guarantee, uh, from the city that if a street got torn up, that it would be resurfaced and not wait for a few years? Because that kind of bothers me, because a street getting torn up might not necessarily be in the cycle, and then we're going to have a lot of angry citizens again complaining about the condition of the street.
That's a good point, and, uh, our plan is to, when we do tear up a street, that we want to resurface the entire street, so that's going to be our goal for each of these projects, so it's going to help also with our PCI index as well, so.
Great, thank you. Okay, so is there a motion to?
I'll move.
A question?
No.
Oh, motion, okay.
Okay, I'll second.
Moved by Councilmember Klein and seconded by Councilmember Marks. Okay.
Councilmember Armaderas?
Yes.
Councilmember Bracco?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar?
Yes.
And Mayor Blankley.
Yes. All right, and 9.2, opening the public hearing, oh, I'm supposed to say, sorry, 7:05 PM, any speakers?
No, Madam Mayor.
Closing at 7:05, and looking for a motion, Councilmember Bracco?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember To- Armaderas?
Yeah.
Okay, to approve a resolution to adopt the 2022 water system master plan.
I'm sorry, who was the, the motion?
Motion was made by Councilmember Bracco.
Bracco.
And seconded by Councilmember Armaderas.
Correct, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Councilmember Armaderas?
Yes.
Councilmember Bracco?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar?
Yes.
And Mayor Blankley.
Yes. Okay, so 9.3, opening the public hearing at 7:06 PM, any speakers?
No, Madam Mayor.
Closing the public hearing at 7:06 PM.
I have one question.
Oh, question?
Jimmy, um, on the, uh, couldn't we use the wastewater impact fees on the storm drains also?
Absolutely not.
No?
No way.
Why not?
Uh, because that is a user fee, and water spent on storm water is considered a tax. Uh, cities have tried it, and that's the challenge, is that when, uh, utility funds were set up, water and wastewater were specifically utilized for that, storm water's never had its own utility funding source, laws have changed, so most cities would have to go to the ballot now to incorporate a fee for storm water. Um, so, yeah, I've been in cities where we've, you know, tried to see if that's a possibility, and, uh, the case law on that is, uh, is pretty, pretty strict.
Thank you.
Okay, so is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Tovar?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Armaderas to approve a resolution to adopt the 2022 storm drain system master plan.
Councilmember Armaderas?
Yes.
Councilmember Bracco?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar?
Yes.
And Mayor Blankley.
Yes. All right, that brings us to item 10, unfinished business, appointment to city boards, commissions, and committees with open vacancies. Are you, are you going to give a report, Ty, or do you want me just to get to it?
You can go into it, Madam Mayor.
Okay, so staff report here, um, maybe I should go to public comment?
I do not receive any speaker cards on this item, Madam Mayor.
Okay, then closing public comment. Okay, council members, as usual, um, I'll go down the line and ask for your vote, we have two seats on the Parks and Rec Commission, there were two applicants, as we all know from our last meeting, the first seat that I'm going to ask us to vote on is for the seat term expiring on 12/31/25. The second one that we'll vote on is for the seat term expiring 12/31/23.
We have two seats at 25.
We have two seats at 25?
Yeah.
Oh, you're right, we have two seats at 25 and one seat at 23. Then let's fill the, what do you, we want to fill the two, well, I guess it's up to the council, but I guess I'll ask for a vote then on the two seats on 25 first, and then go to the, uh, 23rd if, if only one is filled in the, in the others. Thank you for, for pointing that out.
Can we ask, Ty, is that the seat that they both applied for?
Yes.
Yes, Madam Mayor, there was, this is, vacancies that happened in the Parks and Rec initially for 2023, but then subsequently after the notification of the vacancy, we actually had two other vacancies for 2025.
Okay, great. Thank you for clarifying. Yeah, they both applied for Parks, the Parks and Rec Commission.
Yeah, I meant the, the term.
Oh.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm going to start, I'll start with Councilmember Bracco and ask for, for the, how am I going to do this now?
I vote for Vincent and Terrence both to be on the 28.
Perfect, that's a good way to do it.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, Councilmember Armendaras?
I vote for Vincent and Terrence for the 2025 seat.
Okay, Councilmember Marks?
I vote for Vincent and Terrence for 2025.
Okay, and I'm the same too, so congratulations, gentlemen, you're both filling seats through 12/31/2025. And we, the seat expiring in 2023 stays open.
Right.
That is correct, Madam Mayor.
Okay, all right, thank you. That brings us to new business, item 11.1, enhancing the access to the internet and technology for Gilroy's youth. And Bryce is going to give us this report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So this is an agenda item that was part of the legislative agenda that was adopted in 2021. Support and note that the legislative agenda, this item was adopted during the pandemic. There was discussion at that meeting about the challenge of internet access for children to attend school virtually. In that same time window, Gilroy Unified School District invested heavily to provide their students with technology internet access. So essentially, a couple of things happened at the exact same time. So staff is asking council to consider if this is still a need and something that the city should address. Staff's opinion that city is not the best agency to fulfill this role or service, that actually lies with the school district. This is evidenced by the fact that the school district has already addressed the concern. They've issued over 6,000 computers and 1,000 hotspots to the students. So staff is recommending that council direct staff to remove this legislative agenda item, mainly for the reasons that we've already identified, that issues have been resolved as far as student connectivity, the pandemic, school closures have ended, and again, the city is not the best agency to provide those type of services for students. Matt completes the presentation.
Okay, thank you, Bryce. May I, I'm going to ask for a public comment first, if council doesn't mind. Do we have any members of the public wishing to speak on this item?
No speaker cards, Madam Mayor.
Okay, closing public comment. Is there any council discussion on this?
I'm.
Is that a yes?
Yeah.
Okay.
I, you know, I'm still concerned about students and families that are on the other side of the digital divide in our community. Not everyone has access, and even on social media, we hear a lot of folks asking about what the best service providers are, because the providers that we currently have in the community aren't doing very well, and that's for folks who don't have economic barriers. So those who do, you know, economic barriers or language barriers or technological, I mean, they still, they still concern me. It's not just students, but, you know, families and individuals at large, so I, you know, that's my concern in removing that, and I think I'd feel better if we had more information on the impact, right, or the digital divide in our community, what it looks like, what the demographics are, and, you know, how broad is it in our community?
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Tovar, you have a question?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Well, a question, comment, so I would agree with that. Given the digital divide that we currently have right now, you keep, you mentioned that we're not the best agency to provide this. If you can elaborate on that for me a little bit more, why that, why that is, but I also am concerned with us getting rid of this. We're going to eliminate or give less access to individuals that may be in need of this service, so I'm trying to understand your comment in regards to why we're not the best agency to provide this.
Sure, let me go, so, for example, so the discussion was focused more on the schools and the student access. And so with a school district being the primary one, and they've already responded, they spent $3 million just in updating the computers, let alone the initial investment. So they're able to bring dedicated funding for student access to there that would be challenging for the city as far as spending that money on an ongoing basis. Obviously, they're reaching a broader number with that. I do want to point out that we're not providing less service, we're just, because it's, we're not cutting their access to anything, we're just saying that at this point, we're not the best agency to do that. Depending on the type of service you're going to do, if we're delivering a direct service provision, like let's say, you know, and again, it depends on the scope and what you're talking about, but if you try to say, okay, we're going to provide internet service, we're competing with larger organizations that have a much broader number of customers that have economies of scale. So again, it comes down to, like, let's say we wanted to provide internet service to individuals on the east side or any area, really, we'd be competing with essentially, you know, Frontier. So if they're a larger base, they're able to do larger economies of scale, they can offer those services at lower rate than we could with a limited number of customers. So there's certain set costs that you have to do for that. So that's with the direct service provision. And so that's why it's really kind of difficult to identify and say, well, we're going to provide a service competitively or that could be economically feasible. And then the other issue with providing services, then you have the dependency factor, do we become the dependent, you know, do others become dependent on the city to provide this service on an ongoing basis, and what does that look like to the future finances?
Right. Now, Bryce, in regards to the financial impact, here it says there's none, right? So am I correct in seeing that?
That's for the staff report itself. So we're saying this is an informational item, so we're just asking for direction from council, so there's no financial impact of issuing direction. We do have this obvious opportunity cost for our staff time focus, but this is not in a financial analysis of the options at present.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Bryce. Only comment I would add is, thank you for bringing this back. My recollection of what council supported in moving forward with this was in direct response to COVID and to students who did not, who were not able to access the internet for their education, and that has been solved. And so that's, that was the issue that brought this forward. Did you have a question, Councilmember Klein?
Yeah, I was just going to say, I understand that the challenges, because those challenges are always there. I have a business in Fresno, and I can, or Fremont, and I am having trouble even accessing services, AT&amp;T, I shouldn't say it, but it's really tough. And so I have those challenges, and it is, that's always the case. Thankfully, the school district stepped up in that time, that was real need, and I think it's at this point, I really agree with staff on that, so thanks.
Okay, so this is not an item for a motion, is it? This is just providing?
Just direction.
Right, I'm sorry?
Yeah, no motion, sir.
Right, just providing direction, so I heard two that maybe want to go farther? The others, no, 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 and no. Okay, so thank you. Okay, that brings us to 11.2, consideration of creating a job protection policy.
Yes, Mayor and Council, similar to the last item, this was on the legislative agenda in 2021, and again, was also a pandemic response item. There's discussion that pertains to retaining workers who were laid off, or if a company was sold, or went through some kind of other restructuring, and establishing things like a rehire list and prioritization for rehire. Staff did do the research and found, in agreement with the comments that were made, that there were rehire ordinances that were adopted, that typically were in larger cities like Los Angeles, San Diego, San Francisco, et cetera. We did note that all of them had sunset provisions and review periods to determine if it was needed after a certain period of time. Shortly after the March meeting where the legislative agenda was firmed up, the state of California adopted SB 93, and essentially enacted a similar type of provisions. It requires employers to offer laid off employees certain information and offer positions to those that were laid off, as well as establishing a preference system regarding those positions that become available. That law ends in December 31 of 2024, so there's still, you know, two years and roughly, you know, eight or nine months remaining in it. And so for those reasons, staff is recommending that this also be an item that is removed from the legislative agenda. Again, the state law meets the known intents of the job protections policy that was brought up. The state has the authority to enact the legislation, but it'd be a challenge for the city to do so. And then it's effective for, you know, quite a bit of time remaining to the end of 2024. So that completes the presentation.
Okay, thank you. Again, I'd like to go to open public comment first. Do we have anybody wishing to speak?
No speaker cards, Madam Mayor.
Okay, closing public comment, bringing to council. Seeing none, okay. Direction to move on? Okay.
Thank you very much.
Done with that one? Yep, and, oh, that's it for you, Bryce, huh? Okay, 11.3, review and approve an extension to the MOU and related salary schedules for the Gilroy Police Officers Association for the period ending June 30, 2025. Leanne's going to give us this report.
Council, members of the community, tonight's item before you is for the council to approve an extension to our current labor contract with our Gilroy Police Officers Association. As you know, from our prior meetings, but the public does not know, the Gilroy Police Officers Association requested to engage in discussions with the city regarding the terms and conditions of their memorandum of understanding. Although we were in a closed agreement with the union, the council authorized the city to hold negotiations with the POA because the POA had agreed to some concessions during the COVID time period. And the POA was the only labor group that didn't have an opportunity to discuss terms of their contract following the COVID recovery. So as a result of that direction from council and those discussions with the POA, a supplemental agreement with the Gilroy Police Officers Association is being presented tonight to council for approval. So in 2020, the Police Officers Association agreed to a variety of concessions to help the city weather through the COVID recession. This included salary items that they forewent and reduced salary increases in some of the future years that they had already locked into their agreement. And then at the beginning of fiscal year 23, all of the other labor groups reached agreements on new labor contracts. And as you know, these contracts focused on recruitment and retention of our employees and provided various salary and benefit improvements. The supplemental agreement with the POA, like the other employee agreements approved early this year, contain retention salary steps designed to encourage our employees to stay with the city. These are steps added to the upper end of the salary schedule, and the employee can only earn those steps through staying with the city for a certain period of time and having a good employee performance evaluation. The additional year added to the MOU provides good labor stability for both the city and the union. This is an important tool when we're recruiting new police officers to the city as well, because they're looking at our labor contract and any future salary increases, and they're looking for that stability established in the organization through the labor contract. So with that, the new supplemental agreement to the Police Officers MOU includes the following changes. The term is extended for one year, so it now would go through June 30 of 2025. The salary increases that they had scheduled for fiscal year 24, which were a 1.5 increase 7/123 and a 1.5 increase 1/124, are now deleted and replaced with a single 4% increase effective 7/123 at the start of the fiscal year. A 2.5% retention step is added effective January 1 of 24. And again, they have to reach certain criteria in order to get to that. There's a 3% cost of living increase, 7/124, a second 2.5% retention step effective 1/125, and then a few other small benefit changes included in the contract extension. The new cost associated with the supplemental agreement provisions is estimated to be $225,000 for fiscal year 24 and approximately $592,000 for fiscal year 25. And we would include these amounts in the upcoming fiscal year 24 and 25 budget that we're preparing for council, and that will be coming to you in June. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. The details are in, more details are in the staff reports, and the actual supplemental agreement with the Red Line strikeouts is included in your packet.
All right, thank you, Leanne. Okay, question from Councilmember Bracco.
Leanne, when COVID started, this group was under no obligation to give up what they gave up, correct?
That is absolutely correct.
They could have got their raises and everything.
That's correct. We were in a locked contract. They were willing to come to the table and negotiate with the city to avoid financial impacts to the city and to avoid layoffs across the city organization.
Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to go to public comment then. Do we have anybody wanting to speak?
No speaker cards, Madam Mayor.
Okay, closing public comment and coming back to council.
Move for approval?
Okay, motion by Councilmember Tovar and seconded by Councilmember Bracco to approve the extension and supplemental agreement to the MOU with the Gilroy POA for the period ended June 30, 2025. Do I need to do these both together, or are we doing them both together?
You can do them both together.
Okay, so can the motion be for one and two?
Yes.
Both of you? Okay, so there it is.
You should say what two is also.
Okay, and adopt by resolution the salary schedules associated with the Gilroy POA MOU supplemental agreement for the period July 1, 2023 through June 30, 2025.
Yes.
Okay. Councilmember Armendaras?
Yes.
Councilmember Bracco?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar?
Yes.
And Mayor Blankley.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. That brings us to 11.4, this one's me, updates to the employment agreement for city administrator Jimmy Forbes. Okay, so again, in our staff reports, this is to update, to recommended changes to the city administrator's employment agreement effective January 1, 2023 as follows. Increase vacation accrual by one week and increase the city's contribution to the retirement plan from 50% of regular annual contribution maximum to 100%, which is $11,250. Are there any questions of council?
No.
Okay, anybody from the public wishing to speak?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay, then with that, does anyone wish to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Councilmember Bracco?
Marks. No, it was Marks. We both talked at the same time.
Okay, so which one of you is making the motion?
I'll make it.
Okay, Councilmember Marks made the motion and seconded by Councilmember Armendaras. And that's a roll call, right?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Armendaras?
Yes.
Councilmember Bracco?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar?
Yes.
And Mayor Blankley.
Yes, all right, that passed unanimously. All right, 11.5, report on potential temporary slash emergency housing at the Gilroy Transit Center. Jimmy's going to give this report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Since the unhoused ad hoc committee finished their work last year, there have been some things going on, and we felt this was a good opportunity to talk about some of the projects, or this project that we've been working on and what we've learned. To give you a little bit of background, the point in time count that kind of gives us the number of how many unhoused individuals we have in Gilroy continues to increase, and so from 2019 to 2022, it went up by 16% from 704 to 814. I don't know how accurate that count is. I think most people believe those numbers tend to be higher than what they're reported because of just trying to find where some of these residents are at and getting the information. But regardless of how you look at the data, that number has gone up. And ironically, Gilroy is the eighth largest populated city in Santa Clara County out of 15, but we have the second highest unhoused population next to the city of San Jose. So we are a smaller city that deals with a very, at times considered a big city problem, a big city challenge, I should say. And so the COVID-19 situation really illustrated the need for local government to get more involved in these issues. We had previously relied on the county. The county became overwhelmed, and again, we used the term safety net, and so the city of Gilroy became more of a safety net for many of the services that these residents really need. So that being the case, when COVID-19 is kind of gone by the wayside, it is still out there, a lot of the programs and a lot of the, a lot of money, to be honest, is gone now, and so they have sunsetted as well, and, but the service demand is still very much there. And so, yes, the county still receives tax revenues to do a lot of the mental health and employment services and things like that, but I think they themselves are overwhelmed. And again, so at our level, we become the safety net. So the, so something that we have, the mayor and I have been working on with the department head team is to look at the site where VTA Transit Center is, and that site had been proposed at one time by VTA for housing, and we saw the VTA kind of move from that site to the Athan Alexander site. And so that's what we've been working on diligently with the community development director Sharon Goe and myself to get that, we got that MOU to council, council approved that, and we are in the process right now with that project and community outreach. What kind of housing does that need to be? What part of the community are we trying to assist? Because every project has a different impacted group. The Monterey Gateway Apartments is senior housing, and so we're trying to develop what this housing would be once it gets Measure A funding and gets built. So we turned that attention from VTA using that part of the lot to the Measure A site on Athan Alexander, but we didn't stop. We continued working on temporary permanent housing. And one of the challenges that we've had when we encounter through our quality of life officers, an unhoused community member, is where do we ask them to go? And with the armory usually at capacity, there's not a real viable location for us to help those folks and put them somewhere where they obtain shelter. So we began looking at this process of temporary housing, and that started with the mayor connecting with a lady that we've grown to know, actually quite well, who is named Elizabeth Funk, and she is with Dignity Moves. And so she's been a real asset to us, helped educate us, because we don't know a lot about these things, and we don't know what, how this works. So the first step of this process was in November of last year, the mayor, myself, and the department head team went to San Francisco and spent a good amount of time at a location on Go Street, right downtown, which was considered a temporary housing site. It housed about 70 individuals and right in the heart of, was it Tenderloin District? And so we were able to meet there with Elizabeth Funk and talk to many people who operate that facility. It's a very well-run facility, very clean, very safe, security is extremely tight. They do a really nice job of making sure that everybody's safe and housed and has access to all the services they need, including medical, food, clothing, social services, you name it, it was all there. And that site is funded through some federal government programs and some housing urban development money, I believe some community development block grant money as well. And so we were able to spend some time there looking at the challenges and looking at the opportunities as well. And one of the biggest challenges that we saw, we have public works and public safety concerns and fire department, things like that, which are pretty solvable because they have ways to, you know, to manage that. But the site was a challenge for us because it did allow open drug use. And that is a requirement by the federal government that if you are taking federal money to provide housing, you have to remove barriers to that housing, and they consider addiction a barrier to housing. And so they had to have that allowed in their site. I think you could imagine the challenges it creates, but you know, infection, addiction, overdose, those types of unfortunate situations. But the fact of the matter is they did allow it there and is a concern. So we went to a different site, the mayor and I, in December in South San Jose. And this site was quite a bit different in that it was operated by the city of San Jose using their own funding. So they really got to call the shots on how they wanted this site operated, how they wanted it ran, and what they would and would not allow. And they do not allow that, you know, drug activity. Very similar setup with the community, very clean, very well-run, lots of services, food, shelter, education, and folks going off to work and coming back and having somewhere to sleep and live, you know, live a much better life than on the street. The issue that we ran in that site is that there were 78 individuals housed there at a cost of $3.4 million annually, which is about $44,000 a year per resident of that site. So as you can imagine, it's pretty expensive. It's very expensive to provide those kinds of services. And then the other kind of challenge that that site had is that it was designed for 60-day stays, and two years later, most of the residents were still there. So it was not temporary transitional housing. It kind of involved into permanent housing. That is one of the lessons that we certainly learned, that temporary housing is a very big challenge to get folks in a position where they can be able to handle permanent housing. Many of these folks have been on the streets so long, they're not really integrated into the day-to-day life that so much of us are used to, like paying a bill or going to a grocery store, getting gas or things like that. So it takes quite a while to reintroduce them to what we take for granted every day. So those were a few of the challenges that we saw. You know, none of this is probably a surprise, but we wanted, you know, the council to know that we did spend some time looking at this. And so at this time, you know, we're going to continue to focus on what we've been doing with the council, and that is Measure A projects, affordable housing policies and programs that make it easier for developers to come into Gilroy and build those projects. But at this point, I feel like as a staff, we've ran our course with this due to these challenges that we see. We could not recommend to council that they spend that kind of money for that kind of facility or allow the kind of things that you need, you may have to, to remove that barrier. And so I'd be happy to answer any questions for you, and especially the whole department head team, Sharon Goe in particular, to answer kinds of questions affiliated with this, and also the mayor was involved as well. But I just wanted to give you an update on what we've been working on, what we've learned, and where we're at right now. So that concludes my report. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Jimmy? Thank you. Okay, I see Councilmember Tovar first.
Thank you. Jimmy, thank you for this report. When you talked about the city of San Jose, there's 3.4 million. I understand their budget much, much larger than ours, but where did those funds come from?
They came from...
The general fund?
They have a housing and roof fee fund, so they do charge for that, and I believe they do have to use some general fund money as well.
Okay, thank you.
And to answer your question too, there was only one piece of that that the CFO of Home First and that he and the city of San Jose, the then mayor, okay, Sam Licardo, felt could possibly be reduced, and that was in security, which might have been an issue for the surrounding area. But even that, the whole portion of security of the 3.4 million was just under 500,000. So even if you cut that in half, you were changing the $44,000 a year per resident down to like $40,000 a year per resident. So it wasn't that much. There was really nothing else that the CFO of Home First could see removing. So those were real costs to care for people who need all of those advocates and case managers and clinicians and things like that. This really wasn't just a place for people who were, who lost their housing because of the rise in cost and who are just waiting for more housing to be built. There's a lot more to it.
Right, no, thank you for that. And then, sorry, just to add to it, so in regards to 3.4 million annually, was there a sort of time commitment? Are they doing it for a year, two years, or how does that work out? Because, again, I understand their budget's much, much better than this.
It's up to their city council.
Yeah, I think they would have to have a policy change at their council level not to continue that housing. But then you go back to the original problem that you said, where do these folks go at that point?
Yeah, and keep in mind...
I have a question too.
Okay, and keep in mind that it's 78 people at this site, and very few, like four, have not been there since the beginning. So you're helping people, but it's the same 70, yeah, you're not really getting, you're not rotating through. It's not like you're helping a lot of people. Yeah, yes. Councilmember Armaderas?
Were they placed there during the pandemic? And do you think that had an impact?
It's, do you want to...
They've been there for two years.
Okay, they opened up, they opened, it was either at the end of 2020 or the beginning of 2021. I can't remember which was...
2021.
2021, okay, so beginning of 2021 when they opened. So I'm sorry, the question was?
So did they talk about the impact of that on their ability to transition folks out and get them case management and things like that?
I don't think that was a challenge for them. I think that they have a challenge in available permanent housing. I think, especially being in a temporary housing unit where that might be your first stop from the street, to take that next step was such a huge step that the folks weren't ready to do that. So I don't know that the pandemic played a big part in it. I think the pandemic played a big part in opening it, but I don't think the way it operates now has much to do with the pandemic.
And if you could talk about best practices that you might have gleaned from that and any, any cases that were, you know, folks that did transition out, so any success stories? But I did want to mention in terms of my question about case management and the pandemic is that we saw Compassion Center and a lot of the service providers, direct service providers during the pandemic and, you know, through 2021 were not providing case management because the staff was working from home, right? And so they were doing virtual case management, very little, and so that impacted the amount of folks that were able to get, you know, capacitated and ready to transition out. So I think, I think it might be, I think we should include that, right, in our lens when we look at that, right, the pandemic's impact on the providers and getting that service to the folks in there.
Yeah, and I, yeah, I think that's a great point. And I think one thing that I really appreciated in going to both sites was the honesty. I didn't feel like anybody was trying to tell us, don't worry about that. They understand too, and they're learning as well, and these are the people who work in this environment every day. So I think that is a good case to make, that the pandemic slowed the case. But I think what's happened is so much of the federal funding is going away. Everybody's looking for where that next bump in funding is, and they're looking to the cities and perhaps to ballot measures that you may see at the state level. But I think all those things came into play.
So best practices or success stories that you might have heard about?
Well, I think the ultimate success story was that there weren't 78 people without, you know, a house or a roof over their head. Success stories, we didn't really get any specific case information. I think they kind of kept that to themselves, and I think also the fact that very few people have transitioned to permanent housing. So I don't, I didn't know that I would have a best case, or I'm sorry, a best practice to offer. But I think for what it was trying to accomplish, it got those folks off the street and improved their lives, but how does that continue going forward? I don't know.
Yeah, because it makes me think about, a few years back, before I was on council, when our Sobrato transitional housing over on Farrell in Monterey, that was originally transitional housing, and this was pre-pandemic. They asked for it to be, to remove that, to make it no longer transitional housing. And it was because of the lack of affordable housing or housing at that, you know, and folks' challenges in getting financially ready to purchase or move into market rate rental or, you know, housing that they could buy. So, yeah, we've seen that for a long time, being a challenge.
Was the pathway of that 60-day San Jose, because San Francisco, they didn't have a minimum, right?
Not that. Not that we heard.
What was their struggle when it went from 60 to permanent? And did they say, did they have a plan, but that they just couldn't exit because of the inability of affordable housing for them to move them on?
You may have had a different perspective. My perspective was, is that the 60 days wasn't enough time to get anything done, to make any progress in getting these folks ready to transition. And so it turned into a permanent housing site, is what I think. I'm not making a judgment on that either way. I just think that was their reality.
Yeah, the reality.
My memory is that it was 60 days at the San Jose site, but it was six months in San Francisco. I could be wrong, but either way, neither one was, neither one was adhered to. The turnover wasn't there.
Did they say the selection process? Because San Francisco, you have so many, and in San Jose, you have so many, so what was that?
We didn't get into the selection process at all. Unhoused person was unhoused, and that's, yeah, how it was. But I do want to say that this whole came about from when I attended the League of Cities Conference. And, you know, you have a lot of other council members there from other cities, and it is a really nice way to connect and talk, you know, to hear what other people are doing. I mean, what are best, what are other cities trying to accomplish? And through another council member, I got introduced to Elizabeth Funk. And so I suggested that Jimmy join me in one meeting, and from that, we've done several meetings now. And she and her company, Dignity Moves, is trying to push legislation, state legislation that could turn temporary housing, meaning housing that's not on foundations, that's by temporary just means that, not the length of time, to be treated as permanent and qualify for housing vouchers, which temporary housing, if it's not on a permanent foundation, does not qualify for housing vouchers, which is a lot of what many, many times unhoused folks need, because it's not that they can, they're not, they're probably not, they're not just in the 30% AMI category. They're not able to pay for housing, you know, period. So the housing vouchers become necessary. Where that legislation will go, you know, I don't know, but that is something, if you have, if a city were to have a temporary housing site and could take vouchers for that, there would at least be a mechanism for paying for the services, you know, that then go. But who knows? It's just, it's been such a great learning experience. I mean, just things that you might not even, you know, think of. But in the end, you just, you aren't rotating through very many people at a very high cost. Yeah. Okay, Councilmember Barco?
Now, myself and Councilmember Marks, we visited city teams in San Jose, and theirs works. They transit, they come through there, and I think it's one year, and by the end of the year, they have a job and they go on to other housing. You know, government is normally not the best avenue to solve these problems. Maybe you ought to look at what they're doing. At the time, they had just bought a big complex, and they couldn't come down and help us, but that might have, may have changed.
Yes, Mayor?
Yeah.
Last week, I had gone up to the Carpenters Union in Morgan Hill to see their program, and I met a man who has put together a program for Elmwood, and it's more on the side of restorative justice. But what he talked about, when the people enter his program, if they have any type of addictions, that's number one. They get them cleaned up. And then they really push schooling along with the trades, along with a skill that they're going to move out of. And then they also talk about partnering with different junior colleges, and I'm going to be talking to him in two weeks. I'll keep everyone posted on what I'm finding out. But I looked at him and I said, you know, what's your success rate? And he said, we have like a 60, 65% success rate right now, which I think is really, really good. And I said, do you think this would help the unhoused? And he said, yes. So we need to dig in, because I think there are solutions out there. We just have to really start looking at ways to do this, so.
Okay, that's it. All right, did I already do public comment on this one?
No, Madam Mayor, but we do have one speaker card, and it's Ron Karkish.
Very good, opening public comment. There we go.
Lady Mayor, council, when I was working at the, for the San Francisco High to High Intensity Drug Trafficking Area in San Francisco on the 14th floor of the federal building, Philip Burton Federal Building, we used to have to get, you know, park our cars, and we'd have to travel down to Tenderloin. And we saw these people, these, these problem people with addicts, and they were selling drugs to us right in front of us. When we, I was on the 14th floor, and you can peer out the window and see them doing it in front of the San Francisco police. It was just routine. So Jimmy, you did a great job when you talked about San Francisco and San Jose. It was wonderful, because it did bring back that stuff to me. And to do what San Francisco does without, you know, not having the ability to stop drugs, that's not something we want to do here. I've seen it personally, I've seen it for a long time. San Jose, I'd like to remind everybody recently that Matt Mahan, the new San Jose mayor, he just had an article in the paper, Sacramento Be Up, I believe it was. And he's basically calling out, he's asking all of you, your electives, the mayor already told me that she's involved in that, but she's asking for, he is asking for, to get everybody to get a front, to go to Sacramento and say, you got to take leadership, Sacramento, Governor Newsom, because look what we're talking about. We're talking about millions of dollars that we don't have. So we do need to help these people the best that we can, but we have to help Mahan provide a united front with every single one of you, with every single city electeds to go to Sacramento, to speak with one voice. Mayor or governor, help us out. You take the leadership. We're tired of you washing your hands and putting all the responsibility on us, because we can't afford it. We don't have the expertise to provide people that have mental ill problems or drug addiction problems. So I see my time's almost up, but thank you, Jimmy, again. That was great. Thank you.
Thank you. Concluded?
No other speaker cards, Madam Mayor.
Okay, closing the public comment, and this is just received report, so unless there are any other comments, I'm going to move on. Okay, item 12 is city administrator's report.
Okay, I have a lot, but I'll go first. First and foremost, transitioning in our last topic about housing, I wanted to let council know that on the council's legislative agenda for fiscal year 2223 was a work plan item for the city to see proposals to develop an inclusionary housing framework and affordable housing incentives policy. That RFP went out on March 27th, and so that is due back to the Community Development Department in April 28th, and that is one of the big ones on your legislative agenda that we said we would get to, and so we're excited about having that out there and looking forward to responses. Second, we did open the 7th and Eagleberry parking lot after attempting three different ribbon cuttings. We just give it up. The parking lot's open, enjoy it. We'll do another ribbon cutting for something else. Sometimes you just got to let mother nature win and move on. It's a great lot. I'm glad to see it's being used, especially on the Veterans Hall side. They were very happy with the extra ADA parking spots, and we're really looking forward... They were very happy with the extra ADA parking spots, and we're really looking forward to seeing what goes on there during the summer. So that's, that's a good thing. The next Fight Dirty event that we just did downtown, we will be doing Los Adams Park in, I believe, the end of April. I think we're almost settled on a date. But if you have an hour or two, and you know how to pick up trash, we have something for you to do. And we got a lot of help, and it really, it's a great momentum builder, and we're looking forward to doing the next one at Los Adams. Along the lines of the question about before you dig a pipe up and make sure you're going to put the road back, I'm going to make a lot of fans here. The road from La Chesa Avenue to Rossi Lane is going to get entirely repaved as soon as the Water District is done with their project, which should be here in the next weeks or months or so. And if you don't remember, that was a recycled water pipeline that would end. So this time, we tore up the road. Valley Water will repair a lot of it. We use the city as part of our pavement maintenance program, will repair some of it. And so, yeah, it's coming.
That's a big deal.
That's a big deal.
That was a PCI number four, I think, on that street.
Almost as bad.
From zero to 100.
It was almost as bad as the post office alley, which reflects that too. Sharks update. I've been getting a lot of questions, and I'm happy to report that I did talk to the Sharks last week, and we are moving. And so if you say, well, what does that mean? We have two things that we'll be bringing back to council relatively shortly, is a contract with a preliminary architect, and then also a reimbursement resolution. So what the reimbursement resolution allows the city to spend money, and then when we issue bonds, we're able to reimburse ourselves for that. So those are the two things on our next steps. We have a long way to go, but we are out of ballot measure and surplus lands act purgatory and are moving forward. And so I'll probably give you an update at every council meeting about where we're at with the Sharks project, because it's very exciting. And then the last thing I have to report is very exciting, if you're a fan of sewer trucks. We always show you pictures of new fire engines and fire trucks and some of the cool stuff the police get to do, but this is really exciting for this. This is a Vector truck, and it was delivered today, and it is the cleanest you will ever see it. But for those of you that appreciate good public work systems, this is a very big purchase for us and very exciting for our crews to have the best tools possible. It's a huge vacuum cleaner, water pressure, it does it all, and really cleans out the sewer lines and keeps things moving. So these things don't get the attention that some of the other things do, but I always think it's pretty cool to buy stuff like this. And I know that our crews are excited to have good equipment, and also want to thank the council for all the support that we've gotten in buying these things. They're not the most exciting purchases, but they sure make a big difference in helping our employees do their best job, and they do great work. So.
Can we do a ribbon cutting for that?
Oh, yeah. That concludes my report.
You should put a big red bow on that for the picture. Okay, thank you. Great news. City attorneys' reports, equally good?
Well, I can't compete with a truck. I mean, that's just a beautiful thing, I have to say. I want to discuss briefly two cases that came out in the last six weeks or so that explained to some degree why we take SEQA so seriously and spend so much time and energy and money on reports. And the answer is because of cases like this where courts have overturned public approvals. In both cases, they are very longstanding projects, and in both cases, they're based on noise issues, of all things. The first one particularly is interesting, you've probably read about it. It's the Berkeley Housing Case, where the regents approved a housing, basically a dormitory project in People's Park. And you may remember, some of you, that Berkeley has been trying to build housing there since 1969, and that's what, that's what formed the original kind of riots in the 60s there. And that's why it's called People's Park, because reaction to an attempt to build housing. In any event, the regents finally approved a project for student housing. It was challenged by neighborhood activists who thought it was a bad idea. And the trial court approved the project. In other words, they said the EIR, they did a full EIR under SEQA, full environmental impact report. Trial court said that was adequate. The appellate court reversed. And the appellate court says that the EIR did not adequately analyze noise problems caused by student parties. And the proponents of the housing said that, that you can't look at that issue, because if you do, you are, they say, quote, "NIMBY project opponents will force affordable housing proponents to conduct noise studies based solely on biased opinions that poor and formerly homeless people are noisier than other neighbors." In other words, people were saying, well, if the court is going to say students are a noisy bunch, then what about other potentially noisy bunches or people that opponents of a project may think have different kind of impact than other people? Can that now be looked at under SEQA, which has traditionally not been? The court pooh-poohs the arguments. I have to say, the regents didn't do themselves any favors. The regents argued that this was opinion and speculation that reflected on anti-student bias. The regents said, quote, "Newer students could just as well spend more time studying or socializing quietly on the internet compared to prior students." That's not a very smart argument, I don't think. The appellate court pooh-poohs the argument that the student parties are not a problem. And this got a lot of press, kind of derisive press pointing to the court, saying, this is kind of ridiculous to make this an issue. Like many of these opinions, when you read them closely, the opinion is a little more intelligent than it seems in the press, because it turns out that loud student parties have been a problem there for decades. There are committees in Berkeley that study this issue. The regents, the Cal Berkeley administration has a committee, they meet with neighbors regularly. So it is actually a known problem. However, this is a very unusual decision. It's going to be taken out of context by people who will oppose projects and will claim that this project, which seems to be a normal project, actually has unusual impacts because of the people who will live there or the people who will associate there. So this case is going to be misused by SEQA opponents. Okay, the second case also concerns a public project that is long in the making. This is the Burbank Airport, concerns a project that was approved to redo the terminal at Burbank Airport, which was built in 1931 originally, and they've been trying to redo it since 1980. So finally, this project had to go to a vote. In 2016, the local residents approved the project. The cities who own the airport, there are three cities who actually own the airport, they did a full EIR under SEQA. And they concluded that the project was acceptable. That, however, in addition to the EIR under SEQA, because the federal aviation administration's involved, there also had to be federal environmental review under NEPA. I think you probably know NEPA is the federal statute that actually SEQA is modeled after. So it's fairly similar to SEQA. So they started doing that report. Remember, the vote was, it was approved at the state level in 2016. They started doing a EIS under NEPA. That was finally approved in 2021. So this is already, it's taken about seven or eight years from the time the project started. The FAA approved the project, and the appellate court reverses and says that the noise analysis from construction noise was inadequate. And the way, in particular, it turns out, as those of you who've been there know, this isn't a very busy area of LA, or Burbank, actually. And actually, this lawsuit was brought by Los Angeles, by the city of Los Angeles opposing the thing. The issue was construction noise as received by residents who live about a quarter mile away, and they live right near I-5, so they're exposed to freeway noise consistently. The court says that the FAA's analysis looked at the noise created by individual elements like a bulldozer or a jackhammer or something else. But what about two jackhammers? Court said, what if you have a jackhammer that's the noisiest single thing, and it's at 64 decibels at these people's homes? If you had two jackhammers, that's 3 dB more, because that's a doubling of noise. And what if you had four jackhammers, et cetera? And so the court overturns the FAA's analysis. It overturns seven years of work, because it does its own way of looking at construction noise and basically ignores what the public entity did. So, again, these are cautionary tales about the kinds of arguments that can be made against projects and why, when we bring things to the city and when Sharon's department does SEQA analysis, we try to do it as carefully and, you know, as well as we can. These are both, in my opinion, bad decisions, and they're both decisions that will be thrown against cities like Gilroy, who are trying to do the right thing. If anybody has any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Okay, any questions?
Okay.
No, thank you, Andy.
You're welcome.
Okay, with that, we move to item 14, which is adjournment. Right? We're adjourned, 8 o'clock.
There you go.
Thanks, everybody.